There's still some traffic, but you don't have any problem getting to where you want to go. And then as level service C, you're starting to increase traffic. And then there's the D and then the F. Most of the times, especially on major roads, you can't design for a level service A, especially if you think of Dallas or Kansas City. You're going to have roadway that's 10, 20 line. You can't do it. So level service C is actually fairly standard for design purposes, especially in large communities with lots of traffic. So this intersection, it certainly can be approved. There was, I had two thoughts. One was to design it correctly so it wouldn't have to be approved in the future, which would mean left turn lanes in all four legs. We could add right turn lanes too if needed, or design it so they could be added in the future. And the cost for that is upwards of a million dollars. So that's...
Seven.
Yeah, that was more than we thought.
A million dollars.
That's kind of like pie in the sky.
Right. See, sounding good.
And then if you look at just putting up signals, then you're looking at more like $250,000. If you just put up signals, in my opinion, I think you're going to have, you're not going to help the matter because you're going to have traffic queuing up. Because if you have traffic coming, say northbound, and the light turns green with no left turn, then they're going to be going. If you have somebody that wants to turn left that's going southbound, then they're going to have to wait until all that northbound traffic goes through and maybe sneak in at the end of the light during peak hours, which is the problem.
So it may work because you can turn.
I think it might make it worse.
That does make sense.
So my recommendation would be to, let's see if we can get the whole 45th Street corridor from Woodlawn to Oliver into the WAMPO funding, and then include the intersection with that. The Woodlawn from 37th to 45th, we're trying to get that in for 2020 funding. We have an interview coming up May 18th regarding the project to let the WAMPO selection committee know what the project is about, so we're hoping to get that in. There will be an update to the WAMPO tip where all the projects go in in 2020. So I'd like to make a list of projects that need to occur. 45th Street would be one, as well as 55th. And just kind of look at the areas, the larger areas around the city. But I would highly suggest that this be tabled and looked at for WAMPO funding. WAMPO would provide, if we get it through, 80% of the funding. So we would just have to come up with a 20% match, which 200,000 is a lot better than a million dollars. So in credit, that project would be significantly larger if we do the street open.
And again, Anne, you're saying Woodlawn and Oliver?
Woodlawn's programmed in for 2020. Or that's what we're trying to do now, from 37th up to and including the intersection of 45th. And that will include a portion of the streets in the three directions to get that turn lane in. But as far as the intersection of Oliver, which I was asked to look at, I would suggest that we look at into the WAMPO the next planning period. So I'm getting that in for, because especially with the level service C, it's really not too bad at this point. And there's not really much we can do without putting in those turn lanes, which increases the cost.
Do you think that when you present it, your maybe, let's say, 2025 it would be, do you think that Wichita would sign on with it since they own the west side? And then they would do maybe like we did at 37th, they pay 10%, we pay 10% and WAMPO 80%?
I certainly would hope so, but that would definitely be where we would go.
What we would try to do, yeah, okay.
I think that would really be nice.
Definitely.
Yeah. That really does make sense though, because you can't turn, so everyone's going to be mad behind you. I never thought about that.
Well, I'll tell you one thing.
Smart, thank you.
Someone put me on the spot, but seems like we do get a few calls about Woodlawn at 45th. You know, twice a day, there's backup, but I know we've done the studies and I guess I'm talking more to people at home where, you know, the, because I try to explain to people that the four-way stop gets traffic through faster during those times. But this will be good to have that turn lane in there.
Yeah, especially if you explain that to residents, just kind of the way I did here. If you put that four-way stop in and if you've got traffic full in two directions, facing directions, then that left turn is going to have to wait, and then that's going to back up everybody behind them. So, and then they're going to try and go out.
Right.
Well, I hear a lot more people concerned about the Woodlawn and 45th intersection than Oliver. So I think it's definitely the high priority for most residents and that's good that we've already got that on the list to be taken care of.
Yes.
Nice report, very good. Good job.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the pedestrian and walkway. I was asked to look at a walkway bridge across the ditch between Woodlawn Avenue and Bel Air Park. The elevations between edge of Woodlawn and the top of curb of Woodlawn Avenue are such that I can't do a straight ramp. It will not meet ADA requirements, and anytime you do new construction, it needs to. So I had, what I had to do is on the last page, it's just kind of like a little zigzag. That would cost roughly $51,200, $52,000. My concern about this is with knowing that Woodlawn is hopefully going to get approved in 2020, those elevations are going to change. So I would really like to see this idea, which I think is awesome, incorporated into that project instead of a standalone project. A couple of the issues that I see is, number one, where do you put it? I was thinking the intersection just north of Gunnison on the south edge of Bel Air Park. But if you're going to put in a walkway or a bridge across the one ditch, you really need one across the other ditch. And then you really need a marked crosswalk, because just by putting that bridge in, it's telling everybody, "Cross here, cross here." But without additional safety measures, that's, you run the risk of an incident occurring. And as, up until now, we have not had any pedestrian or bicycle or car-related crashes, so.
Was there a study done, that was a little bit before my time on the council, was there a study done regarding putting in the lights and what have you? Because I have to tell you, I've never seen a kid cross there.
I don't know. As far as I go, it was just a request that was made to me. I know my predecessor did look at locations of the lights, and that was never done under him, so when I came in, I was asked to look at it. And the locations of lights are fine, because it covers that whole area. But a planning needed to be done to figure out, you know, kind of the whole...
If I could speak to that a little bit for Diane, please correct me if I'm wrong. But this actually came, we actually had a young man, he was like seven or eight years old, that came to us, this is about, I think it's like my first year being mayor, so we're going back three years now, and requested that. And that was something that we wanted, and it's actually Councilwoman Martine and I both really wanted. I think Dr. Becker also, we kind of agree, yeah, because, I mean, I see children crossing there every day. Now, of course, I live on Odessa, so I'm driving there a lot more. But that park by far is probably our most popular park in Bel Air. And anytime it's above 60 degrees, it is full of children. And then we had Anne's predecessor, he did a study and came back and told us we had to do all this stuff with ADA compliance and, because our thought was, put up a bridge, and Bob's your uncle, call it good. Can't do that. This is what we learned through all of the, you know, and through everything. So, and of course, we want to be ADA compliant, we want to have that. So we kind of scale back, put up the lights, which are a good warning system, and kind of as a bridge, for lack of better words, to when we could get to something like this. Is that Dr. Becker, Peggy, is that kind of, I think that's the way.
People caution.
Right.
And signals are a lot more, you know, they run around 150,000, and we didn't have sidewalks on either side, and then there's ditches on each side, and so it would have gotten pretty expensive. Again, thinking that in 2020, we'll redo the whole road. And so council suggested, well, maybe we just put up warning lights so that people will understand that, hey, if there's kids running across there, they'll slow down.
And they can be moved, they said we can reduce.
Right, right.
And I do think they've been effective, because even though I know it's not actually a school zone, I just automatically slow down.
Right.
Every time I see those yellow lights flashing, you know?
Me too.
So I think it's really effective in cautioning people to be careful and slow down.
See, this is one of the biggest civics, not biggest, but one of my very first real civics lessons almost that I got, because it was like, I think we're all like, well, yeah, get public works, let's paint a couple lines, put up a couple lights, build a bridge. You know, heck, we can do this in a weekend. And way more involved than that, which is where we are now today.
No, I understand the involvement, it was just, I wondered where the numbers came from, because...
We've done a study at both in 14, you came up with the traffic count?
Yeah. Or, well, like I said, I've never seen the kids now, you know, I'm gone all during the day. So the only time I'm out is, you know, weekends and evenings. But then again, that's when kids are out. So I've never seen them on there.
I see them daily.
And that park is full. Every time you go by that park, it's just wonderful.
There's a lot of adults too that go out, those guys play basketball there all the time.
And there's families having picnics there.
It's wonderful.
And groups meeting. I saw wedding pictures being taken there.
Oh, nice.
Just all kinds of things happen there. It's really wonderful.
And then with the Woodlawn project, we will look at making sure there's safe crossings at all the intersections.
Yeah, I'm not saying I'm against it or that type of thing. I'm just looking for some backup information.
And then we'll put sidewalks in, which has been a big issue, is there's no sidewalks.
I can't wait till we do that. That's going to be so wonderful.
We are planning a 10-foot path on one side of the street to connect with Wichita's 10-foot that they're putting on 37th Street.
That's great.
No more sidewalks to nowhere.
Yes.
For a while.
Well, if you go further in town, the 10-foot sidewalks on the other side.
Yeah. And that's something that I know when Schwab Eaton originally put together the exhibits for the project, it was shown on the east side of the street. Like, oh, we really need to get this on the west side of the street. That's all going to be looked at during the design and seeing where elevations work. So it goes in easier, less money, less walls. So, trying to be physically conservative with that. All right, any more questions on the walkway crossing?
Sounds perfect.
Okay, backhoe bids. We solicited four different companies for a rubber-tired backhoe as opposed to a track hoe. We want a rubber-tired hoe because it doesn't tear up the streets like the tracks would. Two of the companies, Kamatsu and Volvo, they discontinued their rubber-tired hoe a couple of years ago. So they were immediately out. We received proposals from two companies, Foley Equipment with Caterpillar and Murphy Tractor with John Deere. Foley Equipment actually submitted two bids, one for the backhoe that met the specifications and one for a slightly smaller one. Our staff did demonstrate two backhoes from, two John Deere backhoes from Murphy. They demonstrated a smaller one and then a larger one. With the larger backhoe, they're able to do more with it. They can, heavier loads with the lifting with the forks, they can actually reach the top of the international dump truck, which we use for sand and snow. So we're requesting the larger backhoe as opposed to the smaller one, and, which is what you've got prices for here.
So is that the 310 or the 430?
The 310. Well, we demonstrated the 310. We have a Caterpillar, a smaller Caterpillar currently. And so we're very familiar with the Caterpillar brand, how they work. And really either backhoe would meet our needs, we're very familiar with both of them. We think both are very good machines, so. That would be completely up to the council, which, which one you chose to go with. The funding is currently available and planned for in the new equipment, in the equipment reserve fund. So it is there for use, don't need to wait for an extra year.
We have almost an $8,000 difference between the two bids on that.
So you're okay if we wanted to go with the one that's obviously 8,000 less? Same warranties and everything?
Exactly the same. The John Deere, that 310 is actually what we demoed. They did bring that one out to the site. They actually brought two. Every time they demo a backhoe, it needs to be completely repainted after it goes back to the shop. So we were very thankful for their time and effort to allow us to demonstrate the backhoes. But both are good machines and both will meet our needs.
They really liked the John Deere though, didn't they?
Yeah, they did.
So you have no preference?
We have no preference.
They liked the John Deere, so they worked out great as the low bid.
Yeah, low bid, and I know, and Anne, was that in January when you kind of came and presented? When was that? And I know you gave us warning this was coming and needed. And again, for those at home, when you hear us talk about $110,000, but this is something that's going to last a decade at least, so we're not...
How old is our other one?
That one, 2004. It's used just about every day and has operated for about 4,000 hours.
So could you tell for the people at home what we're doing with that one, if people are watching?
Sure. What we do with that one is, it's got not only the backhoe for the digging capabilities, but it's got a bucket on it, so we use it for lifting sand into trucks. We use it for digging trenches when we need water service lines, when we have water main replacements. A lot of variety of different uses. Those are just a few. We had, as I told you in January, we had one instance where we had the water main break over on 37th. And we also had a water main break, or fire hydrant break at the fire station. So we had the contract with Duell Construction to help with the break on 37th because our backhoe and forces were being used on the fire hydrant. So it doesn't happen very often, but we do need, we can definitely put two into service.
Have a backup at least.
Right, have a backup. Well, we need one at the shop to load materials while the other one's out on site digging. So if you don't have two, then you have to go back and forth, which takes a lot more time. If there is a break, then it's longer for the residents to get back in service.
And again, that's why I think I, I guess, speak for the council, I really appreciate how you put together that long-range plan so that we can anticipate. Obviously, maybe some things that happen here and there, but for that very reason.
The other one's 12 years.
Yeah, 13 years, yeah, 12, 13 years old is the other one. And we're, I mean, the city's growing every day, so we're going to need more and more, so thank you.
You're welcome. Good job.
And this will be on the next meeting, then to approve, so any questions?
And they have it in stock, then you'll just bring it over.
Exactly.
And you'll paint it every time we use it.
I wish.
It's pretty John Deere green.
I always wanted to drive a backhoe.
They're not green?
No, they're yellow.
These, this is, all of them are yellow? All of John Deere?
They're yellow.
I thought this was...
Caterpillar is yellow, isn't it?
The John Deere, the work equipment, like the backhoes, they're yellow.
They're yellow.
But they don't have rain, like, trim or anything?
Uh-oh.
I'm not sure.
See, my wife's family comes, I was going to say, if it's not rain, don't even bring it, don't even turn it on.
Well, I saw a line one of them, but...
Yeah, when we were demonstrating the one, the John Deere, I went out one day, like, wait a second, I thought we were getting a deer. I guess it is.
Well, yellow is easier to see.
Yes.
So I think for safety...
This is a caterpillar one, right?
Yeah, and then there's a John Deere one too.
Yeah, and I just thought that...
It's yellow as well.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I just thought I'm getting green.
All right, and we've got your full report here, so yeah, well certainly, council's ready to move forward on coding for that at our next meeting, we'll have that on there.
And then just one more thing to update you guys on. I did go through with one of our staff members to drive every single street in the city. So I have done street survey. I'm working on putting it into Excel on exactly what each street needs. There were five streets, in my opinion, that need to be completely reconstructed, basically from the ground up. They're just in such poor condition that there really isn't a treatment that we can do to bring those up to where they need to be. There's about 16 that need asphalt overlays, so which would be about a two to three inch overlay. There's two that need it fairly bad, because they're going to be moving into that full reconstruct category here within the next couple of years. But there's, I did go through, I will be presenting that probably within the next month or two. But just wanted to let you know that, yes, I have gone through. Pretty much our entire street budget this year is devoted to patching. As I was driving the areas, I noticed areas that were just small, isolated areas that are deteriorating, that need to be patched to preserve the integrity of the whole street. So the cracks don't spread. So that's what we're doing this year. Next year, we're looking at more of a preservation and sealing some of the newer streets so they don't start to deteriorate. So just trying to get the streets to an overall good condition and stop the bleeding, so to speak.
Thank you.
We talked at a recent council meeting about a company that Dr. Becker and Councilwoman Martine saw up in...
At the league.
Right, and so we suggested that we buy a small quantity of that particular cold asphalt mix or special at for, and has anything been?
Not yet, not yet, but that is something that Ty asked me to look into. So we'll get some first to demonstrate and see how it feels.
You know, to see what their claims are true or not.
Yeah, definitely. And we sure, we've got a lot of patching to do. Most of that will be with hot mix asphalt, it just lasts longer. But we do keep a quantity of cold patch on hand for just the small potholes that occur, and especially during the winter when you can't get the asphalt, the hot mix.
I have a question for...
As I was saying, we've gotten lucky, a couple years, we haven't had a winter.
Right.
But now we're getting a lot of rain, seeing a lot of soot there.
Which doesn't help.
I'm sure you will, but when you bring that to us, if you bring those two streets with the cost, I was thinking if we end up having a little bit extra in sales, maybe we could move some of that to the two that you said are crucial. I hate to go another year if then, I mean, it's so much more to have to tear the whole thing. I mean, if you could just bring us the projected cost, and if we do have some of that, we have that ability, we could, if we had extra on the land sales, to put for a couple of that, don't we? Couldn't we do that?
Could do that, yeah.
I mean, I'm just really worried when I hear you say that. I mean, I just, I think if you would give us a number of what it would take for those two that you think would go into that next category, then we could kind of talk about it and make a decision.
It seems like streets are something we hear more about.
Those two, and then have seven that need totally rebuilt. If you could get those two done this year, it would save us in the long run a lot of money.
Even next year, or in the next two years probably.
Oh, okay, so it could wait a year?
It's not in the, it needs to be done absolutely right now, this minute, or it's going to go in the next category. I'm looking at a couple of years.
Oh, good, okay, well, I worried that it need this year.
Depending on, of course, winter. If we get a hard winter with lots of freeze thaw, then time schedule is going to move out.
Okay.
How about our gravel streets?
The gravel streets are actually in pretty decent condition.
After some rain?
There's a few that had little valleys in them that our department has gone through and repaired. There's some that need additional material that just need to be built up, and we're still working on that. I have had a few calls about the gravel streets, about the grading. And the thing with the gravel streets is you need moisture in order to get a good grade on it. And when they're calling, we haven't had the moisture, and so it's hard to get it graded correctly. And then one of the gentlemen was asking, well, can't we just pave it? Well, we can, but... So I talked to him a little bit about the petition process to actually get it in.
Yeah, I heard a little bit of that too. It was like, well, maybe we just ought to pave it. And I was like, okay, that's a whole...
You have to get the residents to sign on for specials.
Well, in paving a street, you're looking at probably between 300 and 500,000. It's not cheap. So, and that's, a lot of people don't realize, well, why don't you just lay down a bit of asphalt? I don't know, it doesn't really work that way. Because we want to make sure we do it, so we don't have to come back in five years and redo it. So, and that's something that I will need to get with maybe Michelle or Allison about, because it's my understanding that some of these gravel streets have been paved before. So, and they were just deteriorated so bad, they went back to gravel. So I'm not sure how that works, if you can actually spread specials on them. I don't think you can charge it twice, so that's something that's going to need to be researched.
You probably know the most about that.
Well, there were some, there were some streets that they took reclaimed asphalt, got it ground up, and laid on some streets, and then they rolled it. And those are some streets that was done years and years ago. And some of those, I know we've gone back to history. But that was, there was some reclaimed asphalt available. Mayor Smith decided to put it on the streets, and he could have done it, and so they put it on some streets.
And that may be what we're seeing is that reclaimed asphalt on those streets.
That would make sense.
So, in that case, there would never have been specials. There's things to keep in mind.
Never had heard that.
Well, like I say, I've been here a long time and it's been dirt. I mean, maybe down in there, they had put short...
Right. I learn something every day.
Yeah, definitely, especially in Pearson's neighborhood. When we did Edgemore, a lot of those streets are just like two or three inches thick. But if you look at them, they're really not in that bad a shape. So the whole thing probably needs to be done, but I'm hoping that we can get by with just an overlay on some of them. Some of them are in the complete reconstruct, but if we can get by with just kind of patching them a little bit, doing the overlay, it'll help.
Well, when I moved here, there was no Edgemore to the north.
Oh, sure.
Okay, and it was dirt for a block to the south. Kind of thing, I know, because the school buses always got stuck out there.
No, yeah, when I started bringing my daughter to school, there was no houses on Edgemore until you went clear down to pass your house. That was all field.
Yeah. So that's probably, they probably did that quality on that, you know, from me north, which is why it deteriorated so badly. Yeah, it just wasn't ever done properly. So I love my street. So, I love my street.[598.46][598.46](Laughter) I didn't have anything to do with it.
All right, any other questions for Public Works?
Thank you for coming in.
And thank you.
Good job. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll bring up Mr. Police Chief Darryl Attaberry. You're up.
Let's start with animal control. That's fine, that one's an easier.
Were you out on animal control?
No, no, that's on-
We were discussing that.
Oh, no, I was kinda scared.
Then I thought you were chasing a dog or something.
No, there's one over-
I saw a stray dog when I came in.
There's one over by Resurrection right now. It's a little golden retriever, the guys are gonna go look for it.
Yeah, that's one that I called in.
Oh, okay. Um, animal control. Uh, we've been without a contract for about a year and a half, and, uh, and that puts us in a position where, uh, we have to try to deal with some of these difficult animal issues, and, you know, we don't have the equipment, uh, or training to deal with, you know, vicious animals, and usually, when police deal with vicious animals, the outcome's not good for the animal. So, we want to try to get a contract with, uh, Sedgwick County reinstated, so that, uh, we can, uh, have another option to deal with animals. I talked to Adrian, um, Burn Lutz, she's Director of the Health Department that oversees the animal control, uh, section, and she told me today that, uh, in about three weeks, first, she's got to go to a session like this with the County Commission, and then, uh, they'll get it on the, uh, uh, agenda for the next meeting, uh, first part of June. So, that will mean that the contracts are ready to be, uh, sent out. Uh, they've, they've, what they did is they, they did a research project and found that all the smaller, uh, departments or cities had contracts that were just a little bit different, and what they did is they, they went through them all and tried to bring some uniformity to the process, so that everybody was getting the same deal, uh, with the same, uh, level of service, delivery, and they gave us some input on that, and, uh, we're hopeful that, uh, the end product is something that we can certainly live with, and I think it will be. Um, and then, uh, once, once they present it to us, then, of course, it'll get back to, to you, and we'll, uh, we'll tell you what that's about, and make a recommendation on where we go from there.
I was curious as to why there, there was a break in the contract. I mean, we had a contract for many years, I think, and, so why was that terminated?
I can't tell you exactly.
So, it was the county side that did that?
Right. It, it came time to sign it again, and they, they didn't want to sign it. And it could be that they were working on this project way back then.
Well, that sounds, like, reasonable.
Yeah. So, but, even though it's been a difficult road, we're towards the end of that, and I look forward to, to, uh, working with them again on animal issues. And I will say that during the time that, that we haven't had a contract, they have helped us out with cages, with, uh, when we need to humanely trap animals. Um, they have given us, uh, advice on how to best do it, and, uh, they have, uh, they've even come out and, uh, demonstrated how to use the cages and whatnot, so, uh, it's not like we were totally without service, it was just, uh, we didn't have all the equipment that they have, the catch poles, the cages in a vehicle, and to, to get all of that equipment, uh, and have somebody on staff to do that is, is pretty costly for the, for the startup. So, we wanted to try to avoid that and get back into a contract with them. As I recall, it was a couple of thousand dollars every year-
Yeah.
-for animal services, but to buy a vehicle, hire a personnel, get all the equipment-
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars. So, how many years at two thousand dollars, I mean, you start doing the math, and it just isn't good for us.
Right.
So-
Well, I think, I mean, two thousand dollars for, for that to humanely trap an animal, 'cause as you said, and I know as an officer, sometimes you've gotta make a quick instinct to protect yourself, and then, yeah, that saves a, animal's pet, which is obviously upsetting a high-stress situation, I-
Right. And they are, they're very adept at taking care of, uh, and dealing with animals that are upset, irritated, frightened, and I've watched them work, and, and they do a great job, so.
Do we get a lot of animal complaints out here, do we?
We do. Uh, dogs get out, excuse me, uh, we've had a lot of cat complaints, oddly enough, and then the, uh, the wild type animals, the, the raccoons and the possums and snakes, we get those calls.
We don't have snakes in Bel Air.
Lots of snakes, especially in your neighborhood.
We do not have snakes in Bel Air.
That's probably the highest density.
Stop it. Your backyard.
Stop it.
They aren't, they aren't poisonous things.
So, any questions about animal control? I look forward to bringing something to you here in the near future.
That's good.
I'm glad to know that we can reestablish that, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. And I don't know if this is the time, when you're talking about animal control, but, um, Friday, a group of kids from school came over for police appreciation and cooked out for the police department and the staff, and, um, the, the police were so gracious and came out, and kids just loved it, but they had been out trying to round up a, a cow. And, and they, the Sedgwick County had come in and helped, and it was quite a thing, you know, your officers had to do to get that cow back, you know, they called the farmer, and he's, they said you were just so helpful, you, you knew exactly what farm it had come from, and they called the farmer, and he's like, "No, it can't be mine," and then they called him back, and then they said, "No, it has to be yours," and it was. But, we were talking, on your budget, maybe, you know, 'cause I know my grandpa and my uncles and all them just bought a little four-wheeler, an ATV, is that what you call them, the ATVs out there? For your, I mean, and the officers were saying, really, it would be practical out in those fields to, to round up, because, like, your young guy was saying, like, it started charging at him, and he was like, you know, but, for maybe your budget, when you're talking about animal control, it might not be a bad idea to have one of those.
Well, he, if, um, I would point out that we were helping the county.
It was-
The Sedgwick County.
It was on our side at first, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think, we went back and forth.
Okay, 'cause it was that forty-fifth and between Rock and-
A mobile cow.
It was ours and then theirs, yeah, oh, and I-
But we go out on-
Well, and they were helping us, but whatever, but they actually, they all think it's practical, do you not think?
Let me think about that.
Yeah, and it's your money. It's your money, but it sure would've been nice that day. I, maybe Sedgwick County has one, they just don't bring it out or something. But we have other animals that have gotten out over here, horses and-
Usually, it's not hard to get the, the animal rounded up, if you've got a five-gallon bucket and some gravel. Uh, you put it in and shake it a little bit, and they think it's feeding time, and they'll just follow you along like, uh, the donkeys.
Okay, well, just wanted to tell you we-
And now I learned something new today.
If you think about it, obviously, it's your money, but-
It's the old farm training.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. Um, the other thing that is on the agenda is the emergency operations or, um, management plan. You have the emergency operations plan, this is the old one, and it is old. Uh, I've been, uh, working on it for some weeks, and last Friday, I went to a class by the Municipal Training Institute, and it was taught by- Yeah.
I saw that email.
Uh, Mr. Sweet, uh, John Sweet, City Administrator of Lyons, a very knowledgeable man, uh, had a lot of good information for us, provided a disc with myriad of, of forms and documents that, uh, we need to look at and, and review and, and incorporate into our future plan. Uh, so, I just wanted to let you know that it is being worked on. Uh, it's, uh, probably-
We have one.
Huge project, yeah.
So, we have one.
And, uh, and it's, it just hasn't been updated in a, in a few years, so, uh, we're, uh, we're working with that, and it's in conjunction with, uh, the Sedgwick County Plan. Because if, if we were to declare an emergency, more than likely, they've already declared an emergency, and we would fall under their emergency operations plan, so that'll be incorporated into our plan also. Any questions about that?
Do you have any idea when that might be completed?
I would hope soon. I don't like working on it.
And do we, do we-
No, it's, it's just very, it's very, uh, time-consuming, because-
I know.
There are a lot of, um, um, there are a lot of different plans within the plan. Uh, a debris disposal plan, a sewer plan, a water plan, a flood plan, you know, and they all have to be incorporated into the, you know, the complete document.
And when that's completed, are we gonna get a digital copy, or do you give out the notebooks to each of us, so we know what is going on?
I would imagine so.
Yeah, we'll get copies to everybody, whether-
'Cause everybody here will have a, a role to play.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially him.
Oh, boy.
Or whoever has that title. And that, you know, to declare a-
Right.
An emergency situation, disaster, you know, it has to come from the mayor, uh, so, um, that, uh, that type of thing. And I know some things are in place, but what I, my goal is, is to, uh, put it in a format, so that if we have a disaster of any type, we can pull it out, and, and it'll flow the way it needs to flow to be most effective and efficient.
Okay, good deal.
Okay.
All right.
And that's why we were saying that it's important for everybody to carry their ID cards, because-
Right.
If we have to close down the city, the council, and the mayor, they still need to be here to make decisions, and so, there'll be officers from the county and other cities that are stopping people, and you need to be able to get through, so that we can still conduct city business, so.
Right. Okay. Okay, the next one is vehicles. Did you wanna talk to any of that?
No, go ahead.
All right. Um, we have, uh, a proposal for three vehicles, and, uh, I'll start by saying that in the CIP Equipment Fund, we budgeted for two vehicles, uh, and that was ninety thousand dollars for both of those. A fully outfitted police car with the radios, the lights, the radar, the camera, and so on, it's about forty-five thousand dollars. But, that said, we were able to use some of the equipment we already have to install into new vehicles, so we don't have to repurchase, uh, or purchase new equipment. One of the things that we have talked about, uh, internally, and I've talked to Ty about it, uh, is using an outside vendor for the installation of lights and equipment. Right now, and in the past, what we've had is, uh, officers, uh, who are taken off the street, and they work in the garage to pull seats out and pull whatever they need to pull out, to run wires and, uh, install the equipment. And it usually takes them off the street for a considerable amount of time, so they're not available to answer calls for service or do any proactive patrolling, because they're working on the cars. So, uh, over the last couple of cars, what we've done is try to keep track of officer time, uh, whether it be, uh, 'cause some of it's been straight time, some's been overtime, on how much it costs to install the, the equipment in the cars, uh, plus the equipment. So, we tried to, uh, illustrate that, or point that out on the pages four, five, and six, where we have the TCS quote, uh, because we, we, uh, we were going to go with one company, KCOM, and, um, it was just too hot. Uh, so, uh, we invited the, the gentleman over from KCOM, and, and I told him it was too hot, and he needed to go back to his drawing board and bring us back another bid, and that was some weeks ago, and he has yet to re-contact us. So, um, there are other games in town, and we contacted, uh, TCS Incorporated, and they've been in the traffic control, uh, lighting industry for a number of years. Uh, the son is taking over for the father in the business. And they came out and showed us what they have, and, uh, we told them what we needed, and they shot us a bid, and it was less than, than what KCOM has come back with, and, uh, and we liked the lighting, uh, we think it's appropriate for the vehicles that we, we've purchased. The, uh, the graphics on the vehicles, uh, will remain the same, uh, but they will be able to also install the graphics, because in the past, what we've had to do is install everything we can install here, and then take it down to a shop on South Washington and have them install the graphics, and when they're done, they call us, and, and we get the car back, but with TCS, it's a one-stop shop. The other thing that is good about TCS is that they warranty all of their work and the, the, uh, the equipment that they put into the vehicle. So, if we have a light go out, we run it over, they replace the light, if it's under, still under warranty, and we don't have to worry about it. So, and that's a big plus. The, uh, where was I here? Uh, the graphics, yeah, so they will also do the graphics there as part of the equipment installation. The, um, I'm looking at getting, uh, one Explorer and two Chargers, is that right? No. I have that backwards.
You have two-
Two, two Explorers and one Charger. And I've talked to a couple of you before about the, uh, the Tahos that we have, they're big, uh, they get about ten miles per gallon, which, I, I'll be honest with you, just drives me out the tree, uh, it's not enough efficiency. So, these vehicles get better gas mileage, uh, and I like that. So, this would be in keeping with, with my desire to, uh, get rid of the Tahos, we can repurpose those here at the city for, for other work, but they'll, they'll still be available to us to use if we absolutely need them, so. Let's go back-
How many Tahos do we still have?
We have two.
Two.
We had, uh, we had a total of four at one time. The blue one over here in the north lot hit, uh, the rear left axle broke, and the cost to repair it, it's, it's not worth it.
Are we putting it like on purple wave or something?
Purple wave. They came out today and took-
Oh, good.
So, it's gonna be sold, and, uh, we'll also get rid of the senior patrol vehicle, uh, and then repurpose these over, uh, for a staff vehicle and for the senior patrol. So, we were allocated two cars, uh, but, uh, overall gain for us will be one, even though we're, we'd be purchasing three. Let's see here. On page, let's start on page four. The, uh, and I, I confess to you, that keeping all these cars straight on who gets what equipment and what's, what's used equipment that's coming out of other cars and going into the vehicles, I have to pat Detective Davis on the back, he's done a, a very good job of detailing it here on, on what needs to go in which vehicle, so.
I was saying, we just told Ann earlier, we appreciate how she kinda put together that long list, appreciate Sean doing, too, yeah.
Well, you can see, uh, on the state contract, we get a considerable drop in price, uh, from thirty-eight thousand down to a little over, uh, twenty-six thousand for the base vehicle. The TCS quote for equipment and the install, uh, for a total of seventy-five oh-two. Now, that, uh, that install price, if we look back, it was about, uh, ooh, eleven hundred dollars, almost twelve hundred dollars for our officers to install, so it's just not that much difference, a couple hundred dollars difference to have them do it and to have the warranty-
And keep an officer on the street.
Accessibility, officers on the street. So, on that vehicle, the Charger, we're gonna need some lights, antenna mounts, console, a transport system for prisoners, and we're going with a half cage instead of the full cage, so it's, it takes up about two-thirds of the backseat instead of the full backseat, so we still have utility over on the, the, right behind the driver. It's also a good thing, that, uh, that half or three-quarter seat, because the taller officers, they need the seat to go back further, and with a full cage, it only goes back so far, so, uh-
Do these come with those plastic seats, or is that part of this change-out? What do they do with the seats, the cloth seats, then?
Uh, for all the vehicles we have now, they're over at the water tower. For all the vehicles we have now, they're over at the water tower, stored.
Oh.
So that when the time comes-
You can sell those on Purple Wave too.
Well, when it comes time to get rid of the vehicles, we can take those new seats and slide them right back in.
Oh, okay. I wondered where you stored them. Yeah, okay.
And, and they're, they're all wrapped up and in the corner up, up next door at the water tower.
And it's dry enough in there? Doesn't ever get, okay.
No, they're up on pallets.
Oh, okay.
So, and that, the Charger will also need the graphics, the graphics install, the, the camera and the radar. So the, because we don't have equipment for all the, all three cars, but we have equipment for two of them. Because we'll be taking it out of two and putting in that, that equipment in two of the new cars. So that, on the state contract with TCS, install is forty-two, five, ninety-three. And that's for the Chargers. Any questions on the Charger? Now you'll notice that on the two Explorers, there's a price difference. And that is partially, part of that is that one of these will be my vehicle to drive and I don't have a cage, the prisoner transport system in mind. And that would be the one on page five. So it would still need the lights, the, the antenna mounts, the console, and then the graphics and the graphics install. So that state contract price with TCS install is forty-three, one, seventy-six. The page six Explorer-
Thirty-three, thank you.
What did I say?
Forty-three.
I was thinking of the next page already.
Yeah, the next page is forty-
I'm getting ahead of myself. Thirty-three, one, seventy-six. Then you'll see on page six, same vehicle, but there's the prisoner transport system, a radar, and a watch guard camera. So that brings that price for that vehicle up to the forty-three, four-ten. So, and I had the math done earlier, but I think it was around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for all three.
Now what was it in addition, you said the radar and the camera, and what was the other item? That was in addition on this last card?
The prisoner transport system.
Oh yeah, I see that now. And this is not as expensive as that other one? Because the other one was like three bucks, wasn't it?
Yeah, this, this, the one on page six is the one for the officers to use on the street. It'll have the prisoner transport system. And we'll have to get some new equipment, the camera and so on for this one.
So yours won't have radar?
Mine'll have radar, but we're using the radar out of the vehicle I'm in now.
Gotcha, okay.
And the same thing with the camera?
And same thing with the camera.
Oh, okay, okay.
But you, you never transport, you don't need that? So what would happen if you would make an arrest while you were-
Call one of the guys to take them downtown.
Okay, okay.
Don't you ever watch Cops? They always say I need-
Well, no, I didn't know that you didn't have that in your car. I don't think I've looked in your car, sorry.
And one of the reasons is, we can use my vehicle, the officers can use my vehicle if they, you know, three of them go to training at KALTC. One time, we took an officer up in one of the cages that has the prisoner. Now he sat on the non-prisoner side, very uncomfortable.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
Strip up to hutch.
I was just thinking, it seems to me we could only need one car to transport them. I mean, you know, you, because you aren't doing that all the time, are you?
Well, whatever you, officer has, whatever car they're in, they need to be available to use that car to transport.
Okay, so that, that happens all hours, okay.
Night, day.
But like what she's saying, I saw what she's saying, like, if you had the other officer on duty, you could call them over, right? No?
Well, you could, but it's not really practical and a lot of time-
Well, the fact that we don't have our own jail makes it more mandatory that you have to transport them someplace else.
Yeah, yeah. In whatever vehicle that you have available to you.
That makes sense.
And if you have, if you have more than one person that's going to jail, you have to call another vehicle anyhow.
Yeah, and we hope you never have to use, but-
It, sadly, it's something that we do have to use frequently.
Because WPD doesn't have cages in them.
Every car.
They didn't miss you.
But they, no. I know my first vehicles didn't have cages. We put them in the front seat next to us.
Oh, God.
In fact, they said that they're following us and getting our same seats now. They liked what we did.
Yeah.
That's what they were telling me.
And this decal thing I talked about-
That they like.
They love our decals.
Yeah, you were telling me that when you were talking to Chad.
I went to O'Reilly's today and the employees had to go outside and look at the car just to see it. Because they liked it, so. I'm sorry, that's aside.
No, it is sharp looking.
It is. So that's, that's where we sit. So we're going to repurpose two vehicles. We're going to get rid of the, the black and white Tahoe. And then we'll have a net gain of one at the police department.
Because we, you know, we talked about our last workshop bringing on some help for Keith, a code enforcement officer. So that person will need a vehicle. And so when I knew what the chief was doing, I thought, well, why trade one in or go buy one? Why don't we, he's going to need some new vehicles. Why don't we take those Tahos that are not as well police-first as they should be? And get, let the seniors have one and then we'll use the other one at City Hall so that person can then go out and do-
Okay, the seniors would appreciate being-
Get those seats out of the water tower?
Yeah, yeah, and then we'll just put the seats back in.
Well, the, these already have, the two Tahos already still, they still have the seats.
Oh, okay.
In them.
Oh, it's just the Chargers?
It's just the new vehicles. We went to the hard seats because-
Right, makes sense. They can't stick stuff in them.
Well, that, and sometimes people get sick in our vehicles. And the vinyl seats with the, well, but with the creases that go down and a normal seat, you can't get it all. And then it's just, it just reeks. So with these new seats, it's a form of plastic and you can just wipe it all out. And they even have drain holes in the floor, so you can spray it, wash it out.
So where do we get the rest?
Now, the one that the new inspector's going to be using, will that have police markings on it? Or we need to repaint it or take the decals off?
We'll take the decals off.
Okay, right.
And that's a safe one, you can't have a police-
You can't have a mark unless it's- It can't be marked, but we can still leave the lights on in the vehicle. And we could still purpose it if we needed to during the Parkinson's run. You know, just any variety of things that, that we have going on here at the city. We could use it for that because it's got the lights still in it. Because we're not gonna reuse those lights in these new vehicles.
I had a friend that bought a used police car and they'd taken everything off except the siren was still buried in there somewhere.
Sometimes they're hard to get out.
They couldn't find it. It would just go off randomly, you know? It was the funniest thing.
Some shop guy just had a pass putting that thing together. Yes, sir.
I've got, I read the agenda earlier and I had several questions. You've answered many of them, you and Ty together, and I appreciate that. But some of the ones just that I should ask are, I see that we go to dealerships quite frequently for tires. And sometimes service, but tires mostly. And my experience, personal experience, has been I had a gas tank replaced in a Suburban, which is a good-sized vehicle. Cost me nine hundred dollars at the dealership, and this was ten or fifteen years ago. And I could've gotten that for about three fifty or four hundred dollars elsewhere. When I found that out then I, you know, I learned over the course of time. So my question, what the question is, do we get any discounts from the dealerships on things like tires? And if we do have to have a service done, do we get any discounts there? And the next, and the other question would be, if you could explain the rea, well, you already have it. You've partially explained it, the need for three cars rather than just two cars. Give that to me in terms of the number of officers that we have using the cars and so on. I, I'd just like it broadcasted, you know, you have good reasons for doing these things. And of course, the police department is probably the most expensive department that we have. And so-
You'd be in trouble if I needed backhoes. The, the number of vehicles. Right now, we're doing what we call hot seating on two of them. And that causes, well, and what that is, is somebody drives it on first, somebody drives it on second, somebody drives it on, on third. And that causes the, the mileage on the, on the vehicles to go up pretty fast. So, you know, after a period of time, we'll rotate those, those vehicles so that we can balance out that, that mileage. But with the number of officers that we have, there are times when we'd have to have two officer cars. And I'd prefer not to have a two officer car in, in Bel Air when we could have more vehicles out patrolling and deterring crime. So, the, Ty and I have talked about the, the number of officers and, and the need for, for cars. But I would point out that this is a net increase of one because we're giving up the two Tahos and we're only gaining one vehicle instead of actually the two that we had budgeted for first year. So I'm actually losing a car by doing this. Because I was supposed to get two and, you know-
But it's okay because I'm getting one.
Ty's got good ideas.
And we really needed somebody to help Keith.
Yes.
That's very important.
And I, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly behind that.
You refer to discounts?
Yeah. The, the dealerships with the tires, I would, I would take issue with that we get a lot of tires from the dealership because we don't, we use Kansas Land.
I'm sorry, Kansas, all right.
Yeah, Kansas Land is where we get the tires. The, the oil changes, for instance, we had one recently that was, I know the bill was like a hundred and twenty-six or a hundred and seventy-six dollars. Part of that was a oil change, I think the other part of that was a battery that they had to replace. Because the reason why we had it at the dealership was so that they could track down a battery issue. And while it was there, we also needed the oil change, so we had them do the oil change.
So it was probably only a forty-five or fifty dollar again?
Well, I, I think it's probably around sixty-
I meant the oil change was-
Right.
And you and I, you and I have had a discussion before about the miles on, on the cars. About what mileage do you think about trading a car in?
Between eighty and a hundred thousand.
So we have a disagreement there on it, because I still think we should go, we can go at least a hundred and twenty, but I have-
That's, that would be irresponsible. With a police car, that would be irresponsible.
Yeah, I would, I'd be-
Well, if you're an over-the-road trucker, I'd go with you, but not for police cars. They, they start to fall apart at a hundred and twenty thousand. As a matter of fact, the one that we have out here with broken axle, if an officer had been, and it's only got a hundred and-
Twenty.
Hundred, a hundred and twenty-three. Okay, if an officer had been in that vehicle when that axle broke, chasing somebody, there's liability. And I don't think you want that.
What I, what I, what I would like to see is strip maintenance on, on the vehicles at, at whatever intervals you deem to be appropriate. And I think that the, I still think the mileage can be increased on them without, without endangering any of the police officers. Because if you have mechanics overlook the entire vehicle, look at the belts, look at the hoses, check the transmission, look at the axles, look at the wheel bearings. That kind of thing, I think will, my experience says, it will increase the life expectancy of, of that vehicle.
And, you know, of course, you know, I worked somewhere else before I came here.
Sure.
And I will tell you that the maintenance schedule for these vehicles exceeds what was, what there was at my previous employ.
I believe that.
And I would, I would buy any one of these vehicles as soon as the police department was done with it.
How often do you-
As for a personal vehicle.
How often do you service, you know, oil change, filter change, air filter, oil filter, and-
I, I don't keep track of that. That's, Lieutenant Fox takes care of that for me.
Might explain-
I'm sorry. No, no, I was gonna say five or six thousand or less.
Or less.
Less, okay. That's, that's good.
Part of the issue here is a lot of times the, even if you're not driving, you're sitting, the car's still running, so it does a lot of idling, right?
Yeah. The idling doesn't hurt it as much. It's, it's the, the constant turnarounds to, to go after violators. Or here, what we have that was different than, than in Wichita, was we're out on dirt roads and some of the gravel roads we have here in town. And when we back the sheriff's office, we're out on dirt roads also, so.
Who does? So will you take, if we vote on this, to do this, it was ninety you had in your one, just move it from your other account or how are you wanting us to?
Well, that was actually in the CIP Equipment Replacement Fund.
The ninety thousand, right? So the extra we would take just out of, because it's twenty thousand extra, right? Is it right around a hundred and ten? Is that what you said? We would just take out of reserve or?
Yeah, well, the, the goal would be to maybe have some reductions because when you replace vehicles, the maintenance goes down on them. And then with better fuel mileage, we should have some savings in gas.
Yeah, I just wondered.
So we could have some there. And then we talked with Michelle about maybe some other, take it a little bit more out of the equipment.
And you'll get some back from that-
Yes.
Purple Wave to put back in.
I would like to point out too, just in mind-
And take some out of Keith's budget?
Yeah, so, you know, you're supposed to get two, you're getting-
You're getting, well, out of Keith's budget, you could take for that transportation, right? And put in his.
And again, as we're growing and as we're adding staff, as we're adding residents, to, to move a car and put it in where it's still being used in other ways-
It's a very small-
Post line some, so-
I like that.
This is a, maybe somewhere, some of that can be shared too, that cost.
You might mention the, the Kansas Land, we get them there because of Goodyear tires.
Yes, they, they've got the contract for, they also do the maintenance on highway patrol cars in this area, so they'll replace tires. And they carry the tires that are required for the police use for a Tahoe. You know, and for our other vehicles.
Plus they have a, Goodyear's a state contract where we get a substantial discount-
Right.
On buying Goodyear tires.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so tires being, we can't just run to a Walmart or a, yeah.
Yeah. Because you can get a Goodyear police tire for, what do they run, I mean, for you.
Oh. I would have to look at the-
They're a hundred, a hundred and fifty, where if any of us went in and bought them, it'd be double that, two hundred.
I was gonna say, I had four tires proposed to me and it was five hundred dollars. For four tires, I traded the car off instead.
Those are probably little tires, those.
We, we do try to find, and just to assure you, you know, we try to be good stewards. We try to look for the best deal that we can get. I've talked to you about it, you know, the decals for our cars, we tried to find that locally. And it was over double what we get them for now from a vendor far away. But it's the same material that they use here. So I don't know why the markup is so high here, but we were able to get a better deal. And we can actually do two vehicles for the price of one locally. So, you know, we're trying to be good stewards and, and like I said, we, we look for good deals, discounts where we can get them. With, with each one of the Chargers, we, we negotiated free oil change, so.
For how much?
A free oil change.
A free oil.
It's not much, but it's something. And then I would say too, that number twenty-five, which is my vehicle, we still take to BG Products and that costs us nothing because it's part of a research project.
Yeah, we'll talk about that sometime in the past.
And that's, that's a good thing. And that, for each time it's, it's done, that's just a little bit more savings.
When you get your car serviced, do you, the police cars, not yours, when you get them serviced, do you use BG Products' oil and transmission products? Because they, as you know, they, they run cars practically with no oil at all for a long period of time on a stand, of course.
Yeah.
But they got fantastic results. And so I would, even though I'm, I'm adding an expense, you know, to your department, I realize what they cost because I run BG Products in my car. And so that's, I'd give that a consideration.
If I were planning on keeping them for a couple hundred thousand miles, I think I would do exactly that.
The implicit suggestion is you will, to get that extra amount. To get that extra amount.
And the engine's not what I'm worried about, it's the other things, you know, your spindles and arms and sway bars and the other things that can go wrong on a vehicle when it's doing pursuit driving. Because, you know, I've been unfortunate enough to be in a vehicle when something went wrong. Luckily, it wasn't bad, but it could have been. And things do break, you know, when they're stressed.
Open and lift and take a look.
Anything else I can do for you?
Thank you for coming.
So is this something that'll be brought on the agenda in the next couple of months? Do you want to get some more bids, what?
We're using state contract.
So you're ready to rock a wheel any day?
We're ready to go when you say go.
And they're in stock?
We're actually going to get one of these from, or both of the Explorers from Oklahoma, but they are honoring Kansas's contract.
Good.
Because they actually, it's the dealer to dealer trade thing, so.
I was actually going to bring, with the perfect storms that Oklahoma had and others, I have a feeling there's going to be a run on cars here real quick, starting today. Is, will that affect, is there another reason why we maybe need to do this sooner rather than later? Or is this, I mean, I would just.
He says yes, soon.
Yeah, okay, that was my thinking.
Tonight.
We cannot take any binding action.
But yeah, soon would be good. And, you know, the hail is a concern for us, whether it's in Oklahoma or here right now because that's where the cars are. But we've, there are a couple places, and I don't know if you've driven by during some of the storms and you see absolutely no patrol cars except for the white, black and white one out here. That's because we've hidden the rest of them undercover, so they're.
Where do you take them?
We put two in the garage. We usually have at least one or two officers driving the others. And Woodlawn Baptist Church has the lot just north of the doctor's office up here and they still have a shed standing.
Yeah.
Now we know.
We've placed up to three of them in there on the storm a week or so ago and kept them from getting hail damaged. And so, because, you know, once they get hail damaged, then you have to go through the insurance process and then you've got deductibles and then you have to be out of service with the vehicle for a long period of time usually. Sometimes up, they said the last time it was up to three weeks.
Oh, yep.
So, the discomfort of having to move the vehicles is far less than, I mean, without the vehicles for a period of time. And then with mine, I take it and go to the bank or somewhere else.
Your garage.
That's where my car is. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, you should shut the door, it's raining.
Yeah. So what we did was, Michelle will be here to answer any questions and stuff, but we've put together, but just gave it, she just finished it up, just a preliminary, there's still numbers that are missing that we have not got from the county yet on the revenue side. But we wanted to get this out so you could take it home, you could look at it. We've already put in the expense numbers, but like I said, we don't have all the revenue numbers yet because we're waiting on a lot of it from the state, so. Michelle, you want to talk about what's here so far?
These are replacements for the two in your page, in your packet.
What are we replacing?
You're replacing the non-departmental budget because I forgot to add some money in there for one source. And you're replacing the water page just because it was too sided.
I think we need one more coming on.
Too sided.
Forgot to get one there, okay.
Like Ty mentioned, we're waiting on the most important numbers, basically, so this is not by any means a finished draft. What this is, is I've already talked to the department heads, talked to Ty. This is a good picture of the expenditures, we're just waiting on a lot of the revenue. We're still not sure what the tax is going to look like. I'm expecting an increase. I would assume we're going to have another increase like we did for 2016. Very sizable for all the, from all the new growth.
Same with the sheer number of new homes, yeah.
With them, it's also coming back on the tax rolls after the 10-year IRB expires.
On 17?
That'll be an increase in the valuation as well. How much, I don't know yet. So just a few things I'll point out and then you guys can take it and look at the numbers and let us know if you've got any questions or concerns. You will see in the general fund on the second page there, residential lot sales. We've been budgeting for 280,000 of revenue since 2012. We've taken that out because now the land bank is in existence and any residential land sales go into the land bank directly.
Oh, so when will that show up on the budget later?
It's a separate, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's added on the back now.
Okay, as long as we don't lose it.
Well, I did lower the amount.
Yeah, I just.
Throughout every one of the departments, you'll notice that the unemployment expense went down significantly, we've got $65,000 savings in that.
Wow.
Our rate was reduced substantially, so that is nice, we got savings in everything, every department. Planning and zoning, you'll notice the salary went up pretty high. That is because we're adding a full-time body for Keith, like you guys mentioned a little bit ago.
Where's that?
Co-conformism, planning and zoning for salary, yeah. And then Stacy used to be part-time and she's now full-time, so that's incorporated in this as well. So that increase you see is actually for a person and a half.
And Stacy does all the paperwork for Keith, the filings, keeping track of building permits and things like that, so.
The reason the salaries didn't go up, like on administration, on adopted and proposed because, like, it's just has the same if we decide to do the raise in there?
I did throw in for a 3% COLA like you had asked, so there is enough in there.
But it's still in the adopted because we didn't do it, is that what you're saying?
The 2016 adopted for admin had a little bit more of a cushion because I wasn't sure if Allison was going to be working more hours.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so we put in a little more of a cushion.
Okay.
The 2017 for all of the departments, 2016 did have a 2% COLA that ended up not being done.
Right.
But 2017 has a 3% off of, based on what everybody's currently being paid.
Right.
And the good thing is Allison has said she will give us more time. So, because she was working here, WSU and Hayesville, and she decided that she would give up Hayesville and she's still going to work at WSU and here, so.
So do they know that yet?
Yeah, she told them.
Okay, I was thinking the same thing you were thinking.
She told them a week ago. And so.
So it's an end deal? Good.
Yep, and so she said she'll give us more hours, which is great.
Not many changes in municipal courts for parks. Not much going on there.
Is this another officer on this, police?
Where are you at?
For the 2017 budget for police.
You said another officer?
It includes 12 full-timers.
Okay, okay.
There's an increase in the contractual services, that is for the digit ticket that's finally up and running that we've been working on for a while, we've got that up and going now, so we're paying on it.
And what is that for again?
The electronic ticket.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And you think the animal control, the contract you just talked about is $500?
I haven't seen that contract.
Okay, he just mentioned that he thought it was going to be closer to 2,000.
Do you know?
Well, and it varies on, they charge us per animal, so that's the hard part of knowing, you know.
It's not a set fee? It used to be, I thought, wasn't it?
No, they, well, they charge a set fee per animal.
What does the cow go for?
So.
I remember we still paid even if we didn't have any animals.
Yeah, we don't have a contract right now, so we're.
No, I know.
Kind of like a retainer fee type thing?
Yeah, didn't we? We didn't.
It's like 40 bucks per animal.
Maybe we always had animals and I didn't realize.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, because there always is animals typically on there. It's gone down because we didn't have anybody to do it, but yeah, we, there's always.
I guess I thought that was a retainer kind of.
Did we ever figure, this is, and I'm putting everybody here on the spot, but I'm thinking about this now, but I remember, you know, now when they get the rabies tags, it's every three years where it used to be every year.
We changed that.
Right, but the money is coming to Bel Air now, not going to Wichita, if my.
For the animal registration?
Right.
Yeah, not for the rabies.
That goes to county, but okay, the registration, okay. Because at one time we figured out they're all going, because we didn't have our own post office or some crazy nonsense like that.
Yeah, no, there's a revenue.
That was a few years ago.
Yeah.
It was when Dr. Barrow.
Yeah, okay, I'm just.
Yes, animal licenses.
Well, I think what it was is that at that point, they, people had to actually come here and buy the registration and like the county, you could do it at his office. So we worked with them and several other vets so that they can actually do it there and they just send us the money for it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, whenever I go and they say, well, you can do either Bel Air.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's what I think what you're thinking about there.
Because poor muckies do.
And on the senior club, that's still our grant, right?
Yep, senior club's still grant. Recreation is a little bit of a jump in the salary and that's because Jenny is now working on recreation, she's split between senior and rec now instead of senior and admin. And they had some savings because they only hired a part-timer instead of a full-timer last year or something. That's why that one went up a little bit. Non-departmental, there's not any salaries for 2017. For 2016, when the budget was adopted, we were anticipating having a full-time IT person and a part-time janitor. This has obviously played out differently, we're contracting out for both of those, so you'll see that contractual services has increased, but personnel went down.
And this is the one you want to put in here?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to put X on. You just moved it down to this part though.
Basically, they're contractual now instead of employees, that's what it ended up balancing to. No, we have changes in the pool. New development for land. This is where if we do have some sort of a reserve or some sort of cushion, it gets plugged into land. Right now, we don't know if we will have a cushion or how much that will be because we don't have the revenue numbers completed yet. So this one might change a little bit. Usually where we put that cushion is in the transfer outline in case we do have a great year and we want the budget authority to pay down some debt, we've got it there in the transfer outline.
And we just heard from Ann talk about that we have a couple of streets that are mainly a little bit more than what was in the street fund.
And I totally agree.
So that's where we'd be able to.
Until we have the revenue numbers because until we know what general looks like, I can't tell you what street's going to look like.
But I just want to make sure so that if we sell 100,000 acres and we have a million dollars.
You can transfer it to streets.
We can put it and do a street as opposed to.
Yeah, you can do whatever you want with it.
That's what I suggested, because I knew we had talked about that that was legal to use that.
It's basically in a transfer outline.
Right.
Yes, you can legally use the general fund money for sure, that's not a problem.
Okay.
The special assessments went down because this is only for the special assessments on the industrial land that the city still owns, the land bank parcels now. Part of that transfer out number you see is going to be transferred to the land bank to pay the specials on the land bank parcels. Not much changing in water or sewer. Street, again, is just, this budget's really not done yet, quite honestly. We don't have the numbers from LKM for the tax revenues. And then again, until we know really what general's going to look like, I've got that $200,000 plug in there for a transfer, hopefully it'll be higher. But I just don't want to count on it yet and have everybody thinking that we'll have a half million or a million dollars going in there when we probably won't, so, didn't want to plug it in.
So Michelle, who will, like for our junior workshop, who will be doing this?
Hopefully my replacement?
Okay.
That's why we sped this up so much, because normally you wouldn't have this at this point, so.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate you doing it.
Thank you.
Before you leave.
You did an awesome job, very, very good.
Bond and interest one, those numbers aren't firm yet either. The transfer numbers are pretty firm because those are kind of some of the other funds. The special assessment number, we have to wait on the county to give us that, but right now that's a pretty close estimate.
I have a question. Is it going to affect us that the state has been downgraded credit-wise and everything?
I hope not, but I don't know that it will. I know the last time we had a rating call, they were also waiting to see kind of what the state was going to do with the tax lid that they are imposing upon municipalities. And the last time we had a rating call, the rating agents take on it was, okay, we'll wait and see. But the strength of cities lies in the fact that we have the ability to levy taxes. That's why we have strong bond ratings even when there's fluctuations in the economy because we have that ability.
Right.
The state is somewhat capping that ability and that may increase, or that may decrease our ratings.
That's what I was.
Yeah, I think it may be a common, I don't know if it'll necessarily be because the state was downgraded, but I think it may be because of the things that the state is doing to cities that will cause us to get downgraded.
Mm-hmm.
The land thing, that's a new one on there because that has to be budgeted separately. The statute wasn't very clear, it just said it has to have a separate budget like you do for every other legally adopted fund, so for now, I'm just going to budget it as a fund instead of doing it in a completely separate thing. I, that should say 200,000 there, residential land sales are 20,000, I'll fix that.
Oh, that's quite a difference.
I left out a zero. But actually, I need to look and see what we still really own and what is being marketed for, Ty actually just got that stuff together for me today, so.
The auditors wanted that.
The solid waste, that's another new one, when we were doing the trash proposals, I found an ordinance from back the first time you guys entered into it, an agreement for contracted trash and recycling. And at that time, I guess a solid waste fund was supposed to be established to handle the money and it just didn't happen, so. I just got that set up this week and then the money will start going in there and being handled separately. Right now, what it's doing is going into just a payable line in the water fund and then it's being paid back out of that payable line and then the admin fee is being moved over into the water fund, about $45,000 a year. What this is going to do, it's going to look like we're getting a lot more money because it used to just be in a payable line that didn't show as revenue anywhere. Same amount of money coming in, same amount of money going out, you're just going to see it now as a revenue and an expense instead of just a pass-through that doesn't really show up on anything. So figured that was a little more transparent way to do it and cleaner for tracking purposes. And so whatever's left in that fund then is going to be what used to be the admin fee. It'll be in that solid waste fee.
We could transfer it out.
Transfer it out. The stormwater, I put a budget in here, the fund doesn't actually exist yet, you have to wait, I think, 60 days after the charter ordinance is adopted. So really, this isn't happening yet, but I put it on paper to just give everybody an idea of what we think it might look like. So with the residential and the commercial, I put 75,000, it could be lower than that. And then I just plugged in some numbers for engineering fees and drainage improvements, but this, this again, can, this can change. But just something there so everybody knows it'll be in things next year.
I know we're a couple months ahead of where we normally do with this, so thank you for that. Third preliminary, just a reminder of that, but again, very healthy budget, but no mill increase.
Oh, no. We're not going to do any more increases. I'm not sure what the tax list is going to do this at the moment. Kind of need to know the revenue number before you can start backing all the things they say you can back out. I think we'll be fine. I think we'll have enough. We'll be room at least this first year to really figure out how it's going to impact us and.
Just got to keep selling land and we can keep this going.
So really with this, you can just take it home and just get acquainted with the different budgets, look at the expenditure line item and then hopefully next, when do we usually get the stuff from the county in? Is it June or July when they get us that stuff?
I think, okay, it's June.
June, okay.
I think it might be late June or July, I'd have to.
So we'll have to, hopefully by next month, we'll have more revenue numbers in so we can start comparing that to expenses. But anyway, we just wanted to get started so you have time to review it and look it over.
I really do appreciate that, I think that's great.
Yep.
Nice of you to do that for us.
Thank you.
Yep, really appreciate that.
May I ask, why did the, did you say the unemployment expense went down? What was the reason for that?
Better documentation, basically. We make sure that we document when employees. Better documentation, basically. We make sure that we document when employees are terminated. We make sure we have resignation letters on file for those who voluntarily resign. We make sure we document this, document this one and then I can test every claim and submit that paperwork, so I think that's it.
So actually, we just haven't had that many claims against.
We haven't had to pay out, basically, right.
Okay, good.
And that's, again, that's thanks to Michelle with doing the HR stuff and putting all that in together. So there's a, you know, there's actually a reduction because of the paperwork and the filing and those types of things that we do now, because we still have to terminate people. But if, if we follow the, the guidelines and things like that, you don't have to pay unemployment if, if it's done for cause, so.
Right. Pays to know the rule.
Thank you. We are definitely gonna miss you. Thank you.
And when is your last break?
The twentieth.
The twentieth of this month?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
It's a week.
It's out of the floor. But if you guys think of any questions, can I meet time on me?
All righty.
Thank you.
So do you have a house?
I might think.
That's always a good idea.
I didn't have time to do anything else.
And your little boy is all grown up and, oh, sorry. Sorry. Bad there, bad there.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks Amelia.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. Anything else? I do wanna just remind everybody, I know it's been a kind of a hectic, crazy last few days with everything's going on and with all the media attention we've gotten about that. So everybody had a chance to see the press conference that was held yesterday. If not, it's, it's on Channel Seven, it's online. Would encourage you to, to watch that. We'll need to kinda decide pretty soon how we wanna handle, you know, what we wanna offer. Allison has advised we cannot do that in executive session, so we'll need to do that in an open meeting. So just probably if we could come prepared at the next meeting or maybe even the meeting after that. But I, what I said was that I would like to, you know, recommend, or that my hope would be the council would have a recommendation within thirty days that would give us two or three, you know, workshop and a couple meetings if need be. So, but I just wanna thank all you guys for being so flexible and available. You know, we kinda got everything together Friday, so here we are. Everybody has any questions or anything? All righty.
Is the whole, I mean, because Channel Twelve just did a little blurb. Are you saying the whole thing? It's on Channel Seven?
I believe so, yeah, and it's online and.
Okay, I only saw just the word.
Yeah, I saw just a bit of that.
Yeah, the, the storms and the other tragedy made it a lot smaller than, which was.
No, I just wondered.
Well, that was good.
Yeah.
That was good.
Yeah, so, but, but you know what? We're proactive. We, we got ahead of the story. I think we should be proud of what we did to, like I said, you know, be proactive, be out there in front, telling them, reassuring the public as opposed to having them come and say, what the heck? So here we are. All righty. We will see you all Tuesday at seven.
Next Tuesday.
And so we'll have a couple big purchases on the agenda and, but it's good enough, we've got the.
The funds?
Yeah, the funds to do that because.
Exciting. Yeah.
Down these streets and everything, so, all righty.